Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our regular meeting for May eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. Again, welcome to those in the room, those that may be watching this online or watching the recording of the meeting at a later date. Before we call the roll, I'd like to invite Sean Pletcher, our county manager, to provide an invocation and lead us in the pledge.
Thank you. Let us pray. For the word of God is the power of God unto salvation to everyone that believes in the name of Jesus. Dear Lord, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come together and assemble once again. We ask you, Lord, that you continue to watch over us, keep us safe. We ask that you watch over our first responders, that they also may stay safe as they are making a great sacrifice daily for others. Finally, Lord, we ask that you give our leaders the knowledge and wisdom to make decisions that are in keeping with the best interests of the people they serve. We ask these things in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sean. Could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Thayer.
Here.
Commissioner Richardson.
Here.
Commissioner Schroeder.
Here.
All righty, we have a quorum. And it is nine oh two. So could I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes, so we know what we're doing for the next few hours. Okay, could I get a motion to approve the items on consent?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent items as presented.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the items on consent. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. All righty, elected official department heads and staff reports. Elected officials, do we have anything? No. Okay. Staff reports. Mark, if you could.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'm Mark Denrider, Director of Community Economic Development. I'm here just to provide you with a general update on the USGS well monitoring program in Elbert County, Colorado. We've had the United States Geological Survey, USGS ground monitoring study, in place since two thousand and fifteen here in Elbert County. Where that entity began monitoring groundwater levels in Elbert County. Basically, just looking at trends and changes, if applicable, over time with these groundwater level elevations. Basically, just measuring any rise or decline over time. So there have been thirty-seven wells that have been monitored. USGS is currently working on this scientific investigation report. It's the SIR. This will be the final, not a final, but a most current report on what's transpired, what the data looks like since two thousand and fifteen. So two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and twenty-three. At the moment, USGS is not collecting water levels on that same frequency that they were doing before, that bi-monthly frequency. They're focusing now on that SIR that I just mentioned. And that will be, that report will be finalized according to USGS by the end of this year. They do plan to go back out into the field in around the June timeframe to check on some of the equipment and get some water level measurements as well. The most current contract that Elbert County has with USGS ends at the end of September of this year. It's my understanding from you gentlemen that that contract will be renewed. Currently, year-to-date, the county has paid twenty thousand four hundred and eighty dollars for this contract. And we are looking at grant opportunities that could help fund this effort moving forward. In fact, in the state legislature, the annual projects bill is under consideration, and that is authorizing over two hundred million dollars in additional funding for water projects and studies. Gentlemen, do you have any questions for me?
Just a little comment. We're not measuring groundwater. We're measuring hydrostatic head for aquifers. Because, and I'm saying this for the public because they may interpret it as being streams and things like that. It isn't. It's the aquifer hydrostatic head level.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I just appreciate that. I know there were some questions that folks hadn't seen monitoring as frequently as they had seen over the years. That explains that. And as I said, I think I think we last signed that contract in twenty, it was a three-year extension of the original contract that we signed in twenty-one. We rarely do multi-year contracts, but I think that's that's kind of an illustration of our commitment to continuing this, so we can bounce reality against studies and plans that we have. So just, I do appreciate the update. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Commissioners.
And Bart, I think we had an update on the lawsuit we'd joined.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. I can let the board and the public know that we have been looking into the issue of some of the legislation that the state's put in place that makes it difficult or impossible to cooperate with ICE or Customs and Immigration Enforcement. And Douglas County has really kind of led the way on this and determining how to approach this with a lawsuit. This is something that Elbert County has joined at this point. I have been in contact with Douglas County. There's several other counties that are also joining the lawsuit against the state with the goal of being able to cooperate, have law enforcement be able to cooperate with Customs and Immigration Enforcement issues. And that's just getting off the ground now. But there's, I believe, about five counties that are attached to this effort at this point.
If I recall, that's we've joined the suit as a county and the sheriff individually as our sheriff as well.
That's correct.
And at my understanding, Douglas County is burying the cost of the lawsuit.
That's right.
It's good to have wealthy neighbors sometimes. Now, but I think generally, two-thirds of our inmate population are not county residents when they're not residents at the sheriff's hotel over there. So knowing who those folks are and being able to check and see if there's any federal wants or warrants or immigration issues prior to releasing them back on the streets for what might be a minor local infraction is very important to ourselves and our sheriff. So, thanks. Do we have any other staff updates? Seeing none, we'll move on to citizen public comment. This is an opportunity for folks to speak on any issue that's not going to be covered later under discussion or action on our agenda. Those items we'll invite public comment for at that time. We ask anybody coming up to kind of keep their comments brief, about three minutes. Identify yourself, your address. Once public comment is done, if there's things we can address, we will address them. If there's questions or issues that we need to get to staff, we'll get them to the appropriate staff and pick them up at a later date. So with that, we'll open for citizen public comment. Do we have anybody that would like to speak? Don.
Thousand Highway eighty-six. Today, I'm representing the ECA. I'm on the board. We had a meeting on April twenty-fourth with the Excel President, Robert Kennedy. He's the president of the Excel Energy Colorado. And a vice president, which is the Vice President of Transmission for Excel, Sandra Johnson. And a siting manager, Jim Chester. These individuals came out and met with eight landowners that are being affected by this proposed route. Now, there's fifty-three landowners that are being affected, but they chose eight of us to meet with them. They were met with about thirty people out front with a peaceful protest, signs, and a discussion. They were cordial. We were cordial. They invited everybody into the meeting, but there wasn't enough room in the meeting hall for everybody to be there. So moving forward, we had some discussion items that we talked with on moving the route east. We had, we discussed the fire danger and burying the lines, wildlife, and what they're doing to ruin people's lives, the permitting process from their perspective, and then several points that came up to play. In moving the route east, they basically said that there's, it was never an option. They're not going to move it east. Robert Kennedy told us this is the route, which is interesting because they still have not, to date, pulled a permit in the county. So, but they're adamant that this is the route. They're adamant that they're not going to bury the lines. Cost is always the effect. You just follow the dollar. They always keep coming back to that. When we spoke to them about the fire mitigation, they said that they were going to put weather stations on towers with cameras to try to have an early response to anything that should happen. So first, we've heard of that technology being on a transmission line. We did have discussions on transmission lines opposed to distribution lines. They tried to explain that they do bury distribution lines, but transmission lines are very rarely buried. It was a pretty heated discussion on burying the lines. We had some evidence that we could show that they did it, but again, they kept going back to the cost and kept telling us that wasn't going to happen. Fire, again, Kenny said that they were not responsible for the marshal fire because that discussion came up. That's up for debate, obviously. That's their opinion that we discussed it differently. Wildlife, they contend that Highway eighty-six, which this is coming up through the heart of the county, is already compromised, but they didn't mention that the Rush Creek Route would have been less compromised. It's compromised also, basically to the same degree as the highway. But again,
That's three minutes.
I'll just wrap it up here real quick. Thank you. Again, we were ruining people's lives. We brought that up to them. They're basically are telling us that in June, they're going to file a permit or an application, and then they're going to follow whatever they have to do. They have a backstop, which means they can go back to the PUC and do whatever they want to do, no matter what the county decides. That's what they're going to go back to. They admit it. That's what they were going to end up doing. We feel that the meeting was basically to to demoralize us and so we'll stop fighting, but that's not going to happen. And the final comment is, they did acknowledge that they are monitoring these meetings right now. Hello, Excel. We're not giving up the fight. We're going to continue, and we're going to hope that the county has our back when we come to it. Thank you for your time.
Much appreciated. Do we have any other public comment at this time? Okay, with that, we'll close public comment. Generally, this is where we give you guys an update on what we have heard from Excel, but I thank you for that update because an application in June is something we had not heard. Again, we're prepared at the staffing level to review what they bring in. And at that point, I think we've discussed this before, but when a formal application is submitted, we have a period of time. It's been a while since I've rattled this off. I believe it may be twenty-one days to review the application, determine completeness, and then go back to them, or, and this is at the staff level, to go back to them with specific asks and deficiencies in the application. The ball goes back into their court to make any corrections or additions that have been required by staff, and then it'll come back. I'm assuming some more either formal or informal review, but once the application has been formally accepted, then there is a time clock for it to go through a public hearings at the planning commission and ourselves before we render a decision locally. And as you said, if the decision is not one that they are pleased with, they are entitled to go back to the PUC and ask an appeal to the PUC. If the PUC decision, the PUC's decision is also appealable either by ourselves or affected landowners. So it's, this is still, could be a tremendously lengthy process, but I appreciate the updates and some interesting, perhaps debatable items that, information that they provided you. Any other, anything to add? Or, okay, thank you. So at this point, public comment is closed. We'll move on to our discussion items. The first is discussion regarding updates to our fleet management policy. Bart?
And I can speak to that. Bart Greer, county attorney. As we have grown as a county, certainly, there's been some more vehicles, and that's across all different departments, Public Works, Sheriff's Department, DHS, those sorts of things. We have had a various fleet management rules and policies up to this point, but this is more cohesive policy that is across the entirety of the county. It's something we've been working on for a while that builds on what we have had previously, but it's much more comprehensive. I think we're just about done with the draft or the final draft of that. At this point, we're going to go ahead and push it out to the various departments for their review in anticipation of adoption in the near future. I'll be doing that this week.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for staff?
This policy that we're working on, it would be applicable to each and every department in the county?
That's correct.
I appreciate the work that's gone into it. I know at this point, it's been kind of staffed between attorney, Public Works, Fleet, Finance, and I think we have all the big stuff done, but getting it out to the other offices and departments that actually have vehicles to kind of discuss and look and see if there's things that they have questions on, I think, is the right, right way to go before we go final on it.
Yeah, we've, we spent a lot of time, and believe it or not, there are quite a bit of IRS regulations that go into this. Obviously, liability concerns, insurance considerations, all of those things really have to be considered. And so it's taken a while to kind of combine all of those things and know a cohesive policy that works. I think we're just about there. So I will, I'll be sending that out and fielding any questions at that point.
Thank you. Any public comment on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to discussion of unforeseen engineering costs for the bridge replacement money. And I know they were it was, well, I'll let you talk.
Good morning, Commissioners. Monty Hankins, Elbert County Public Works Director. Yeah, let me give a brief summary of how we got to this point. In June of last year, the county, you know, experienced extreme flooding, almost countywide. The, there was one, there were several bridges impacted, but there was one, four miles west of Aggett, the town of Aggett. The County Road one seventy bridge went underwater a couple times. It's just a almost at creek bed level, single lane bridge that allows the residents on the other side, which there's, there's not a extensive resident count over there, but still, there are residents on the other side that it services. It also services the main infrastructure wellhouse pump station for the water for the town of Aggett is on the opposite side of the bridge, which was, you know, couldn't get to that. And the maintenance folks attempted very sketchily to get over there and see if everything was okay during the flooding. It didn't impact that, that operation or facility during that. Anyway, that being said, obviously, we had FEMA out shortly after the flooding to navigate through all the damages that were significant. We did have the one seventy bridge on the FEMA radar. Nothing moves very fast with FEMA, so we had been doing the paperwork, putting our processes and our language and paperwork together for those folks. Had several meetings with them back to back. In fact, still, we have one every biweekly with those folks. But in that process, it was determined that they would, their engineering people would like to see the underneath structure of that bridge. On the CDOT inspection paperwork, CDOT has that bridge tagged as a hundred and five years old. We all thought that was kind of interesting, being the support structure underneath is a metal I-beam structure. So those kind of products and that kind of construction wasn't really.
We were ahead of everybody a hundred and five years ago.
Wasn't really there a hundred and five years ago. So there is, in more investigation with CDOT, there is some language in some of their inspections that some major repairs were done to that bridge in nineteen ninety-one. We're thinking a lot of the bridge was, was upgraded in ninety-one. It just, no one actually did their due diligence to identify it as a new bridge in nineteen ninety-one. That being said, that bridge sits in, aside from the flooding, it sits in a natural spring, so it sits in water nonstop. What happened was FEMA wanted us to pump the water out to get some look at the underneath side, which we did. Roden Bridge did that. In that, there was severe corrosion and erosion of the support structures underneath that was not flood-related. It's because it had been sitting in water for so long. So FEMA decided that they are not going to have that as part of their reimbursement to the county as part of the flood damages. In that discussion, they did let us know that we could pursue, you know, the replacement of the bridge via grants, and they did offer up one specific one that now our emergency management staff, and in particular, Sarah Clausen as the DOLA grant person that was brought on board after the flooding, is in pursuit of. FEMA also let us know at that time that the Colorado School of Mines would be willing to do engineering through their student program at a much reduced rate on that bridge. It took a couple weeks, but we finally did get a hold of Colorado School of Mines, and in the meeting with those folks, that was not a true statement. They do not do that. So this whole process has taken quite some time, and now we're down to crunch time with the grant. The grant, a lot of the submittal for the grant is due in June. You have to have certain items in place to be eligible for the grant. And part of that is an H and H study, which is the hydrology and hydraulic study for that area. Now, we thought we could use the one that was already done for the one sixty-two bridge that's in the same creek channel, but that will not be allowed per the grant parameters. It has to be specific to the site. So I got in touch with Kim Lee Horn, who we use quite often for a lot of engineering items, and they sent me over some rough numbers because it was, you know, not, they didn't have time to really crunch the numbers. But in their numbers, and to get things rolling, and the very first thing they would do is the H and H study that we could submit in June with the grant submittal. The rough numbers to work up a spans bridge replacement, there is two hundred and seventy to three hundred thousand dollars depending on, you know, what is going to have to be engineered up. They couldn't get real specific with the number, but the bare minimum is two seventy is the number that I have. And I'm just thinking that we're probably going to be pushing three hundred thousand because that was what the one sixty-two bridge was. So I just wanted to get this on your guys' radar because, like I say, we are, we are down to crunch time. In order for the Kim Lee Horn folks to start their processes and get going and have that in place by June is going to be a task. It's unfortunate that all the FEMA things and the processes we've had to navigate up to this point have taken so long that it's put us in this predicament with the time being short to apply for the grant, but that is where we're at. So I'm proposing and hoping that we can maybe get this on the agenda for the next BOCC meeting.
Just a quick question. I believe that you've told us that the bridge as it exists is unsafe.
Yeah, so.
How are you bypassing that bridge?
I'm glad you brought that up. So our drainage crew, who has done a lot of the flood repairs, and per the folks at FEMA's comments, have done a phenomenal job in-house. We didn't subcontract anything, which has saved, you know, the budget and the taxpayers a heck of a lot of money. Even though we are pursuing a lot of reimbursement through FEMA and the Federal Highway Administration, and if you have time, I'll attest to that because I mentioned that last time, and I have some numbers for you. But anyway, so we went out there. CDOT had reduced the weight limit to five tons on that bridge after all the damages were identified and the erosion underneath. So we felt like that wasn't really even good enough. Trash trucks were going across it. There is farming on the other side. You know, it's, people see signs all the time and they ignore them. So having a five-ton weight limit sign out there, yeah, it's there, but is anybody going to buy by it? And we hated for anybody to, you know, get injured. So what we did do last two weeks is we installed a series of culverts just on the inlet side of that, and we built a road across those culverts right next to the bridge. So we did build a bypass around it, and we barricaded the bridge off. So now, I mean, trucks and everything, it's, it's very safe for whatever weight to go across, across those culverts and across that system. Plus, that'll be very good and already in place for however long this takes to play out for replacement and/or during the construction phase of the replacement of the bridge. We already have the bypass detour in place.
Is there a consideration of making that permit, more permanent instead of a bridge? Is there an offset?
You know, it is an option. It was identified on the two thousand and nineteen StanTech bridge assessment that the county paid for and done. It is an option on their side to replace it with culverts. And yeah, if, if we do not are not eligible for the grant money, that might be heavily looked at. Only problem is, that's a significant creek channel. That thing flows some good water. So I, even though it would be several culverts, I would question that if we had a rain like we did last summer, that those would stay in place.
I'm just, curiosity, the grant you're pursuing for replacement, what do you believe that? what do you believe that replacement cost would be? And is it a full, full cost grant or?
Oh, it's an 80/20. Yeah, I think 80/20. It's hard to remember through the FEMA and all that. It's either 75/25 or 80/20. I think it's 80/20. Anyway, uh, bridge replacement, we're probably talking a million five. We have pursued with Skyline Steel, who supplies all of our culverts. They have, um, alternate bridge options available. They're prefabbed concrete Spence Bridges. I mean, it's not your typical rectangular box culvert. It's more of an arched system. It's much more cost effective than your box culvert system or especially a Spence Bridge where you have piles and stuff underneath. Those came in at around 200, 300,000 depending on, you, you have to, similar to a rectangular box culvert, you have to put, depending on the H and H study, you have to put several units together to get the right flow through the area. So we ha, we are pursuing that. I did send that to our engineering firm, Kimley Horn, and they are looking at that as an option. But that would be part of the grant submittal as well.
Thank you. And then you said you had some numbers for reimbursements.
Yeah.
Eman Highway.
So away from that bridge, just some of the items that we have repaired in-house already to include. County Road 13 at Driftwood, we lost that road twice last June. And then County Road 13 at Polo Circle was a significant repair and upgrade. County Road 102, um, between County Road 37 and 33 east of the town of Albert. Those sites, the federal highway identified as 100% reimbursement. We did submit all the paperwork and, and the DDIR to those folks. They are going to cut us a check for 410,953 dollars and 29 cents as 100% reimbursement for those sites and those repairs. The other ones that are on their radar is the engineering so far, and it might be repairs and replace of the County Road 150 Bridge out by the Chaparral and the 162 Bridge, which is just about five miles south of the 170 Bridge out by the town of Aggett.
Those were highway funds as well or was it?
Yeah, mhm, for the engineering. So they're looking at, we have submitted the cost for that. They're looking at replacing 100% of the engineering costs for those to the tune of 330,400 dollars even. Now, with the bridges, the deadline to have the work completed, we missed it. It was March 24th. But we have approximately two years to get that work done. So in that, if we get the work done in two years, it's a 75/25. They would pay 75%. The county would pay 25 of the overall replacement and/or repairs. The 150 Bridge has just been identified as repair.
Okay.
It was just one, one support structure underneath. Yeah, and it's still safe for travel. The 162 Bridge, they've identified it as repairs. We may be looking at replacement only because that is one of those single lane.
Oh, yep.
1965 Army Corps of Engineer Bridges that the county has. We have 19 of those and it would be a good starting point to start to replace some of those bridges. So I would like to, and I know the, the fire chief of Aggett would like to see that bridge replaced. So I think we will look into that. Guys have any questions?
No. Yeah, I was going to say, if we can even get one of the temporary 60-year-old bridges replaced, that would be a good start.
Yeah, I think it's long overdue. I mean, they, those, those bridges actually, you know, CDOT even inspects those along with all of our other bridges every two years. And those bridges actually inspect really well, honestly. They're just, you know, one lane.
Yeah, undersized and weird to drive on.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have any public comment on any of that? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to action items. First is consideration of minutes from our previous meeting. Take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the April 24th, 2024 minutes as written and dispense with the reading of those minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the minutes of the April 24th meeting and dispense with the reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we're going to move into public hearing. This is for, first one is to consider a special event liquor permit for the Elizabeth Stampede. I'd accept a motion to open public hearing on this item.
Mr. Chairman, will we open a public hearing on consideration of a special event liquor permit for the Elizabeth Stampede?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to open public hearing for the Stampede liquor permit. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're in public hearing. Amanda, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, commissioners. The Elizabeth Rodeo Association has submitted an application for a special event permit for the Elizabeth Stampede Event. This event is an annual event that's held at Casey Jones Park in Elizabeth. And the dates for the event are June 6th through June 9th. The times listed on the application include the setup and the breakdown of the event. I have received comment regarding this application from the Albert County Sheriff, Tim Norton, and Elizabeth Fire Chief, TJ Steck. I'll go through some of those comments. Sheriff Norton stated that he has concerns based from last year's event. The over-serving of patrons is one of his concerns. And he would ask that the commissioners not allow the liquor permit to exceed past 11:00 PM. He can go into more of his concerns. He is present. TJ Steck, the fire chief of Elizabeth, he didn't think that there was a significant difference from previous years, but he does share the concerns of the sheriff. I have been informed that the Elizabeth Rodeo Association and the Sheriff's Department have met regarding this matter and have gone over the concerns in detail. The Elizabeth Rodeo Association has created an extensive operating plan to make sure that they do not have a repeat of issues from last year. And they're both here, the applicant and the sheriff's office are here to answering any of your questions. Staff feels that these concerns have been addressed by the applicant and their operation plan, which I have given you a copy of. I did not share that in the packet as I feel it has security information that does not need to be public. And staff recommends, since the board is the local license authority, if the sheriff's office has any concerns during the event, that they contact the chair of the Board of County Commissioners to address their concerns and discuss options. With that, staff recommends approval of the special event liquor permit.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff at this time?
Not for staff.
No. Appreciate you coming in today. I know this is truly one of the big signature events for the county and it has been for a long time. And we want it to be safe and productive for all. And I appreciate the work that you've done with, with the sheriff and fire and to adjust concerns from the previous year. But with that, I'd like to turn it over to you and just kind of let you talk us through what your plans are.
Thank you. I'm Leanne Russell, Albert County resident in Elizabeth. We're joined here by several of our board and committee members as well. I just wanted to open up with a little bit of an introduction of what the Elizabeth Stampede is to us. You already recognize the value of and importance, I think, to the community. But we did provide a fact sheet of some of the things that we're very proud of. One of the things that we recognize is one of your comments about as things change, we need to revisit our procedures and policies and processes. And, and that is what we've been doing in coordination and collaboration with all of the agencies that we consider our partners in this. We've been in the county since 1952. One of the first rodeos that was put on included a lot of the events that you see today. It was in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. It was an amateur rodeo at the time and we focused on the community and how we could bring the community together. In 1987, we were actually in danger of losing the rodeo. That was a very nonprofitable year. That's when the Chamber of Commerce actually turned the control of the Casey Jones Park over to Parks and Rec with the agreement that the rodeo could continue to operate there as long as the operators wished it to happen. It is certainly our intent to have that continue far, far into the future. It's for first full weekend in June. It's one of the things that the best cowboys and cowgirls in the nation put on their calendar and compete here. We've had several world champions choose to come here as the kickoff to their rodeo circuit. Really proud of that. We do have the four rodeo performances and we actually focus on first responder night. We have a red, white and blue rodeo. We really want to stay true to our roots of Albert County in honoring those, the people that contribute to our, our community. We actually have about 90 sponsors that contribute to this as well. It's very much a community event. Our sponsors look forward to this each year. As we noted, each committee has a focus area that is designated to support the rodeo. And every year we go back in and assess, starting the day after the rodeo, what we're going to do different going forward for the next rodeo. So our planning is year-long. We put, you know, this is a full-time job for a lot of us, although we are all volunteers. There are no paid positions on this, the board or in our volunteers. Our current annual operating budget exceeds about 650, but our expenses are nearly all of that. So we put 590 of that back into the community and back into the rodeo, seeking to fulfill the contracts that we can locally first. That's our goal. We have three revenue streams and that's our ticket sales, sponsorships and vendors, which is a very popular item for the rodeo. And I think just in general, the collaboration and coordination with the community is our goal for all of our events and all of our operations. We value our partnerships and our support agencies, including fire, police, sheriff, OEM, the chamber, the town, Parks and Rec, and of course, value being able to present to you as well. Our policies and procedures have evolved. We continue to challenge, what can we do better? The individual people that make up the board and our committees are all vested in making sure that we do something that I love seeing in the bottom of your, your agenda too, which is supporting that Western way of life and the rights of individuals. But the protecting and promoting the Western way of life is certainly our goal. Thank you for your time. I would like to turn it to my colleague, Kevin Whitaker.
Thank you. So my name is Kevin Whitaker. I'm the 2024 President of the Elizabeth Stampede. And I want to kind of recognize here, we've got Gabe and Rob and Matt Dillon also on our board and Jeremiah in charge of entertainment. This is kind of the engagement that we've got this year. When I took over as president in the fall, we've had a 60% change in leadership, not just the board, but all of the committee chairs. And kind of the charge of it has been look at things with fresh eyes, have a new perspective and what can we improve? And that's kind of been the theme here and emphasizing, you know, what is the responsibility at each level? The board, the committee chairs, what is our risk that we're trying to mitigate? And then what's the plan that we're putting in action to try to manage this? And that's kind of what stemmed a lot of our revisions of the operations manual and particularly this committee that you're, you've seen here. The concert and dances bring a vital entertainment to our patrons as they come. And one of the big challenges that we got is how do we make this affordable to the spectators that come? Because we've got, as Leanne mentioned, you know, $650,000 worth of revenue, but our expenses are 590 grand. So about a 10% profit window and our seating is fixed in the stands. So we're, we're trying to play this balance and, but also bring in high-level talent, contestants and the stock. And a lot of these contestants that we've had over the years end up going to the NFR and competing. So it comes back to how do we make this affordable and manage the financial perspective of it? And alcohol sales is one component of bringing in some revenue. But how do we do this in a responsible manner, in a safe manner? And that's kind of what we've dug in this year. And being president, my emphasis has been a collaborative board, collaborative leadership that we're all brainstorming. And that's why we sat down with the sheriff and the fire and the police to figure out proactively, you know, what things can we implement so that they're informed way ahead of game time? And they know what our procedures are. So definitely appreciate the sheriff and under sheriff's input and carving out time to work with us on that. They've reviewed the manual. We've kind of gone, gone over their major concerns. We've done the same thing with the fire department. Some key takeaways is the concert, we learned last year, no re-entry. So once you have a ticket and you're inside the ticketed gate, if you exit, we're going to cut off the wristband and you cannot get back in. We're serving checking IDs per tips training and, and that's 21 and up. If you're not 21, you're getting a big black X on both hands. So it's identifiable. Hard cutoff at 11. You know, we'll do a last call at around 10:30 and then as 11 comes, it's a hard cutoff. We're documenting all the servers as tips training. That's part of our insurance protocol. We've got trained bar managers that are going to, we've got a bar manager per station. They're not serving, they're not selling anything. What they're doing is eyes and ears on the crowd and they're going to monitor the station itself. So if they see something going on, um, they're stepping in right away with security. We also have private security per station. So that's going to help mitigate that risk. And then the other thing that we've learned is the dances that we have after the rodeo, it actually helps with the traffic exiting during the year after COVID. We shut things down early and people left right after the rodeo performance. And it was kind of a disaster. So that next night, we allowed things to continue like normal past 9:00 PM. And that really helped a lot with managing traffic exiting the parking lot and onto the road. With this, I want to close with our goal is to make it a safe event for the patrons, the contestants, for our volunteers, obviously for the county. So we're taking all that into consideration and how to mitigate this. And we're taking it serious, you know, this year. This rodeo's been around since 1952. Our goal is to have it to be around a lot longer than any of us here in this room. And that's the responsibility again that we're, we're taking on. There's no way this event happens without the engagement of the community, OEM, so many external groups that are helping support this. So we need to step up and do our part. It's kind of been my theme as president this year. So with that, that's my closing, but appreciate you, you having us, be able to have time to explain our plan and, and so you guys are in the know.
I appreciate that very much. Do you have any questions at this time?
I've got a silly question. I've had several citizens come and ask me about parking.
Yeah.
Do you have any answer for him?
Generally, there's not a parking problem, it's a walking problem.
I like your response. No, we've been working really hard with the school district and, um, they were super gung ho with busing from the high school. But when we kind of played it forward and, and mapped it out, it just didn't seem like it was going to be maybe the right solution for right now. And we've got, the landowners around Napa have graciously agreed the empty lots to allow us to park there. We have contracts for each of the landowners that are on our insurance. And we worked with the Elizabeth PD to figure out, you know, traffic flow and how this is going to work. So I think for right now, that's probably the simplest option. But obviously post this year, we've got to really start thinking about what does this look like? And what are the alternative options? We are putting out maps, hopefully next three days, no, later in this weekend, to try to inform people what we're doing.
I just have a couple of questions. One doesn't have anything to do with the liquor license. But what roughly the participants or the attendees are Albert County residents versus coming from outside the county to attend the different events? Do you have any, any idea?
That's a great, uh, great question. Our sold-out numbers are 2144 per perf. We find that about 80%. We find that about 80% of those are Elbert County. And we do go into Douglas County, Parker, you know, and we get quite a few from Denver as well. But we're actually really proud of the fact that last year, we did a demographic study. We had people coming in for our concerts specifically from Alaska, from New York, from Rhode Island. I mean, people, this is a destination rodeo, and people are looking for, for that experience and come into Rodeo in the Pines, including that concert. So it's actually a really good balance. We are bringing in a lot of outside folks who are spending money in the county and then also celebrating the local.
Thank you. And I appreciate everybody showing up today. Volunteers are often a thankless job, put in a lot of hours that nobody knows about, and so just thank you for the, the efforts that you do for the county and the Stampede. One question for clarification, within the application here, it shows closing at 11:30 on the 6th, 7th, and 8th, and 8 o'clock on the 9th. I believe you said it was 11:00 a few minutes ago, was what? So do we have a, a change in that or? Can you answer that?
Um, like I said earlier, the times listed are set up and break down, but they are saying that they are going to stop service at 11:00. But I have to have those times in there for the liquor license.
Okay, and that was part of the sheriff's recommendations. I'd love to hear from the sheriff too, if there's anything else that he'd like to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, and I would, Tim, if you have anything you'd like to, to add, appreciate it.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tim Norton, Elbert County Sheriff. As Kevin stated, we've had several meetings about this liquor process and our stance along with the other first responders at the county was, we were not going to have a situation like we did last year. And that, that is one of the goals that we worked out together, that it was not going to happen again this year. 11:00 hard cutoff of alcohol sales for the event, monitoring the service, the serving of the alcohol. I believe we also agreed upon two drinks per person that comes up to the table or event. But also want to reiterate the fact, Commissioners, that we, if we see it's getting out of hand and we're getting somewhere close to what it was like last year, I still would like the, the option of shutting it down early if we have to. That's the only request I have. Other than that, the plan that we worked out with these folks here, I think would be very good.
Thank you. Any questions? Sure.
Just a quick one, and as far as that authority, what authorities would you have now to monitor?
So just, my staff is going to be working their security. I, we, obviously, we don't want anything like last year occurring where we had to take people out by ambulance. So we will, if we see over-serving to individuals, bring it to their attention. If it continues, we would like the option of saying, hey, we're done for the night of serving alcohol. Not the event, but just serving the alcohol portion.
But currently, if you see somebody over-serving or publicly intoxicated, you have options, right?
Yes, sir. Public intoxication, there's not a law on the books in Elbert County for being publicly intoxicated, but we can bring it to their attention, the bar people, the alcohol sales people, that, hey, this is getting a little out of hand, and we need to start watching a little closer. We can escort people out of the, the premises to say, hey, it's time for you to go right now before things get too out of control. The whole thing is, our goal is to have a safe environment for the evening. Not only the evening for the event itself going on, but for after, for when people leave the, the rodeo grounds and head home. Last year, there were several, and I could get the numbers if you need me to, but there were several, several radio calls of intoxicated drivers westbound on 86 from Elizabeth and heading to Douglas County, or they were going Cowah Bennett Road or, or Singing Hills Road. The drunk calls were coming out. Obviously, we don't have the staff to go find all those, or, and it depends on Douglas County's manpower issues that evening as well. We put into plans of working with State Patrol, Elizabeth Police Department, and the sheriffs for traffic in the immediate area to get them out safely and on down the road. We don't want to see anybody getting into a wreck, hurting themselves or somebody else in the meantime with that.
And you're satisfied with the discussions you've had and the plan they have in place that, that is addressed?
Yes, sir. I am satisfied with that, yes, sir.
Yeah, I think on the authority, since we're the liquor licensing authority, I would, if things start to get to a point where you have concerns, I think consultation between yourself and me before any final decisions appropriate.
Correct, absolutely.
Okay, and then you had, wanted to add, so?
I think one thing to reiterate is that that cooperation and collaboration, it's probably not going to get to the point where they have to call, because we will have already been talking. And I think where they're identifying people who have maybe come in already over-served, we are pointing that out as well. And one of the things that we are taking a very serious stance on is, we will identify and point that out as well. We also have a designated driver program that we're really going to kick off this year, and one of the reasons that we want to emphasize that is so that we have a very positive way of working with the folks. So it's not just, hey, you're a designated driver, you get a free drink of Pepsi or water or whatever. It's also, hey, it looks like you may have invited too, a little too much, let's get you a hot dog. You know, we're working more proactively on that. And then one thing that, that the team will really spend a lot of time on is the selection of alcohol. And there was a mistake that was made last year, and we acknowledge that. We looked at the actual alcohol content of what was in there. The next day, we sat down and said, what happened here? This is not normal. This is an anomaly. We need to, to correct it and fix it. We ordered the wrong alcohol, and that will not happen again. We've got too many eyes on it and too many people who are aware of what that issue is, and we've got those corrections in place in, in conjunction with the collaboration, again, with the sheriffs.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I'm going to go ahead and open for public comment at this time. Is there anybody that would like to make public comment? Okay, with that, I'd close public comment. Any final discussion?
I'm impressed to see the departmental working together. Is that how they get through that?
No, I concur. And I, everybody's got the same goal at the end of the day, is to have a good time and get home safe. And so that's, that's where our initial concern came up, but I echo Commissioner Thayer. I appreciate the cooperation between everybody working with that.
I appreciate that. Yeah, one, I thank you all for the time you've put into this. I mean, one of the, the downsides of freedom is people can make really bad choices for themselves, but it really seems like you've taken really good steps to make sure that any individual that makes a bad choice isn't going to endanger your event in the future or, or the other patrons. So I really appreciate you taking this seriously. And clearly, you're good stewards of the event. I think that's kind of the way we feel in this position, is we're stewards of the county during the time we're here. We want to leave it better. We want it to see everything continue and, and continue to grow and be better. So with that, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the special event liquor permit for the Elizabeth Stampede.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the special event liquor permit for the Elizabeth Stampede. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Have a great rodeo. All righty, and accept a motion to close public hearing at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I move we close the public hearing on the special event liquor permit consideration for Elizabeth Stampede.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second to close public hearing on this item. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, okay, we're out of public hearing. Next is another public hearing. This is a resolution for the authorization of appropriation of funding, so.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we open a public hearing to evaluate a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second to open public hearing on appropriation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Tiffany, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tiffany Hermes, Finance Director. I brought to you today a resolution for appropriation for budget supplemental for five different funds, two of those being the Fund 20, Road and Bridge, and 25 Sales and Use Tax. Those are needing additional funding for the flooding that we had this summer. For Fund 20, we are requesting an additional $3.696201, and for Sales and Use Tax, we are requesting an additional $1.384811. We are also requesting for Foxwood Estates. We ended up paying that off early last year to save money, so we are requesting an additional $47,904. And then for our Impact Fund, Fund 85, we are asking for an additional $393,226 for an intergovernmental transfer for the SIA escrow. And last, we have the Bond Service Fund, 95. This was just a rounding error, and it needs to be increased by about $2.
Okay, that one's easy. Okay. Now, and these are truly just cleaning up the books from last year to appropriate the monies we spent, mostly in emergencies?
Yes.
All right, do you have any questions or?
This is just to close out the 2023 books.
Correct, yes. We must have the spending authority, and so we're correcting our budget for that.
I appreciate doing this. I know it's something that's annual that we end up doing somewhere along this time of the year, but we know we got the right people in finance when they're down to the dollars, making sure it's there, so appreciate that.
Absolutely.
All right. I guess at this point, I'd ask if there's any public comment on this. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. I would accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the resolution authorizing appropriation of funds.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the resolution that was provided for supplemental appropriation for the 23 budget. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I'd accept a motion to close public hearing on this item.
Mr. Chairman, I move we close the public hearing on the resolution authorizing appropriation of funds.
Second.
Yeah, motion in a second to close public hearing on this item. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're out of public hearing. Again, Tiffany, thank you very much to you and, and your staff, and your, we're doing well. I mean, it's definitely a, a nice change. I wish we hadn't had to spend so much money on flooding, but, but I guess we'll eventually, I mean, highway, and this kind of goes back to the earlier one, the, the highway dollar is coming back at 100% on some of this is tremendous. I know FEMA is a lot slower, so it'll probably be several years before we see monies flow back against some of these charges, but I think we've got everything in place to make sure that process continues. I think the flooding in '13 or '15, I don't remember which year we had the floods, were the last time around, that was, we didn't close that out until '18 or '19, I think, with FEMA, so I know it's a, a long-term process to get these monies back, but thanks. All righty, the next item we have was, it was an update, a reaffirmation of the support for indemnification of deputies that we'd initially put out after, I think it was Senate Bill 217 that was leaving our, our deputies financially at risk, so.
Yeah, that's correct. This was spoken about by the board at a prior meeting recently, something that we've been keeping an eye on, obviously, with respect to proposed legislation that has been coming to a close for this particular state legislative session. There was a previous letter that the board put out back in 2020 in response to Senate Bill 20-217, the Enhanced Law Enforcement Integrity Bill, is what they called it. There was aspects to that that limited some of the protections that were afforded to law enforcement officers, in particular deputies. And this board, well, the board at the time determined that it was appropriate to provide some reassurance to the deputies that the potential personal liability that was associated with that particular bill would essentially be addressed by the board. And so it has been updated. There was House Bill 24-1460. It ultimately did not pass, it has not passed at this point, but it is something that, as a result of reviewing that and looking at that process, that it was appropriate to update this particular letter. And I will go ahead and read it. It is dated today. It is addressed to Elbert County sworn law enforcement officers. It states, "To the dedicated sheriff's deputies of Elbert County, the Board of County Commissioners, and recognition of how fortunate our citizens are to be served by such a dedicated and professional team of law enforcement officers such as yourselves, we ask much of our sheriff's deputies, and as an organization, you are above reproach." On June 24th, or June 24th, 2020, in response to Senate Bill 20-217 purported to enhance law enforcement integrity being signed into law, the board adopted protections in response to the operational and liability concerns of law enforcement, that the law placed on law enforcement agencies throughout our state and our county's deputies in particular. Likewise, House Bill HB 24-1460, the law enforcement misconduct bill, which proposed adding new rules targeting police who may or may not be reasonably aware of another officer's possible misconduct, appearing more punitive than solution-oriented, creating a new criminal charge for peace officers if they fail to report unprofessional conduct or misconduct of another officer. While HB 24-1460 ultimately failed to pass, the prospect of additional legislation singling out law enforcement personnel and placing additional burdens on the men and women who serve our communities as law enforcement personnel demands additional assurance and commitment of that assurance to our dedicated law enforcement personnel. Consequently, the Board of Commissioners want each of you to know that we will keep reviewing new laws impacting law enforcement agencies and personnel in coordination with the sheriff, the district attorney, the county attorney, and other key members of county management. Together, we will work towards ensuring any statutory requirements imposed on, imposed upon the sheriff's deputies are appropriately, appropriately addressed while providing assurance and protection to our deputies from the personally, personal liabilities the law may create. Accordingly, the Board of County Commissioners by and through the county intends to indemnify our sheriff's deputies for judgments or settlements entered against them or liabilities incurred by them for on-duty actions based on unsubstantiated claims under CRS 13-21-12, which do not result in conviction, do not rise to the level of gross negligence, or which do not violate county or sheriff's department policy, and is not a violation of clearly established law. In such circumstances, the county will provide legal counsel at no cost to our law enforcement officers. This letter amends and supersedes the Board of County Commissioners' letter from June 24th, 2020, in order to assure our sworn deputies that we will ensure you have resources and liability protections made necessary by Senate Bill 20-217. You willingly put yourselves at great physical risk daily to ensure the safety of our citizens. You should not feel that doing your job in an honorable and professional manner places you or your family in financial jeopardy.
I appreciate you updating it, and I'm sure, like many, very glad that 1460 bill did die as it should have, but it just continues to, to show that there's those in the legislature that continue to act against the best interests of our citizens by making it harder to be a law enforcement officer. So we did think it was important to, to update it based on that, even though it, we had started working So we did think it was important to update it based on that, even though we had started working on it when it was being considered. But even though it failed, we think it's important to renew that commitment to our deputies. And again, and to their families and spouses who may feel like the job they do puts their entire family at financial risk. And that's just, should not be the case, and it shouldn't be something that's in our deputies' minds, causing worry while they're going about doing their business for our citizens. That should be, you know, again, we know where their focus needs to be, and it shouldn't be on whether some crazy people in Denver are trying to take away what they've earned.
Would the sheriff like to make a comment?
I would speak on behalf of the men and women of the sheriff's office that we appreciate your support with this so-called bill. But we appreciate the backing and the support of the Commissioners and the county folks with this, and we look forward to continuing to serve the best that we can to protect everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you. So as it is for action, I think there's, as it was read, there's a couple of minor changes in wording that we'll probably make. But with minor changes, I would accept a motion to get this published today.
Mr. Chairman, we ratify the updated letter of support for the indemnification for the deputies of Elbert County after the small edits have been made.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the letter that was presented with some minor edits. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you, and thank you, Bart, for working on this, and please pass our compliments on to your guys as well. Okay, finally, we have consideration of a proclamation recognizing May sixth to May tenth as National Economic Development Week in Elbert County. Mark.
All right, I'm back. Good morning again, Commissioners, elected officials, staff, citizens. I'm Mark Denrider, Director of Community and Economic Development for Elbert County Government. We are here today to present to you a proclamation for you to consider in celebration of Economic Development Week. In the room, I also have Eric Larson, our Economic Development Specialist. There he is, hand is waved. May sixth through tenth is National Economic Development Week. You may recall from previous years where we have acknowledged this event, this celebration, Economic Development Week. It really started in two thousand sixteen by the International Economic Development Council, the IEDC, the Economic Development Council of Colorado, that's the EDCC. They are also big supporters of this event as well, as you might imagine. This week, it's a great opportunity for us to basically just raise awareness of economic development, how we support businesses in our communities. Also, it's a good time to recognize the, and highlight businesses. Really focus on, you know, what businesses are in our community, what they're doing, entrepreneurs, you know, any kind of economic activity in our community. Just a little statistic for you. According to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, there are eight hundred and fifty-eight businesses registered in Elbert County. Hundred and sixty-nine of those businesses have five or more employees, and then twenty-four of them have twenty or more employees. You gentlemen are very aware that we do have a few different economic zones, so to speak, in our county. One is the Economic Development Zone, the EDZ. You, actually, the Commissioners did approve that in two thousand eighteen. This is a designation along high-traffic corridors in our county for prospective commercial activity. There are also enterprise zones in our county. This is a state program. Actually, most of Elbert County is in the enterprise zone, with the exception of just a few spots, really just southwest of Kiowa and in parts of Elizabeth and the surrounding area down there. The enterprise zone, businesses, farms, ranches, et cetera, can use the economic, or the enterprise zone, rather, if they are eligible, and they can tap into some certain state income tax credits. Just to give you a little figure from last year, there were forty-four qualified tax credits in Elbert County, and dollars claimed for that totaled a hundred and eight thousand dollars. There's also a foreign trade zone that's available to Elbert County. Some folks are not aware of this. The World Trade Center Denver took over as the grantee for the Foreign Trade Zone Number One, Two, Three from the city of Denver last year. Elbert County is within this active FTZ service area. So if a business wanted to be included in the Foreign Trade Zone, that would be available if they so qualified. For the Foreign Trade Zone, a company can defer, reduce, or eliminate customs and border protection duties when utilizing the benefits of this Foreign Trade Zone. I just want to remind you, everyone, that we also have a website for economic development, Elbert County. It's dedicated for that. It is elbertcountynworks.com. There's also a place on our county website, and that is a community development projects map. This is a good place for the public to view active development projects that are in our queue. Today, we have two businesses, actually, we'd like to highlight, and we have representatives here with us this morning in the room. The first is Jacob Prescott. He is the Colorado Area Manager for Drill Tech. Drill Tech has begun to move some dirt just west of here, two miles out toward the mountains along Highway Eighty-Six. So without further ado, let's have Jacob come up and share a few words with you all today. Thank you.
Welcome. Good to see you.
Morning. Thanks for having me here. And I'm Jacob Prescott. I'm area manager for Drill Tech Drilling and Shoring. And yeah, we're a specialty geotechnical construction contractor specializing in foundations, retaining walls, tunnels and shafts, and ground improvement. We, under the Economic Development Permit Application Process, had our headquarters' plans for building of a new facility approved a couple of years ago. And we have started to, we put up some fence and started grading out there recently, this past month. So we're going to be building a fourteen thousand square foot facility, housing our shop and an office for our engineers and project managers, and to store equipment in the area. We have so far, we've tried to create more local hires, and we have actually hired a few people from the area already, admin assistant from Elizabeth, and then a couple of laborers from the Kiowa area. So we do appreciate the opportunity to put our new headquarters here. And yeah.
I appreciate that. Any questions or comments?
I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
Yeah, we were a little bit worried. I know we had gone through the approval processes, I think, before COVID.
Right.
I think that probably disrupted everybody's cash flow for a bit.
Right.
Saw your signs down in Franktown when you moved in a little bit closer.
Yep.
Was worried that maybe you'd abandoned your plans, but I'm glad you had not.
No, that's just interim space while we're getting the building built, and then, so we're just renting that, and then we'll move into the building once this comes.
How many folks do you feel will be employed at that site, at the site, once you're completely built out?
We'll probably, so currently, we have about five office people and about fourteen of our field construction folks. Once we have the office fully built out and grown a little bit more, maybe four or five years down the road, it's going to be built to be able to house about twenty-five or so.
That's actually very substantial for our area, so it's appreciated. No, thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Very, very pleased to have Drill Tech in Elbert County. One aspect of economic development has to do with events. It was actually timely to have the Elizabeth Stampede folks here earlier with us. We're familiar with that one, the public fair, or I'm sorry, the county fair. But there's another event that's happened here in the county for a few years now, and it's called the Mad Gravel Cycling Festival. So this morning, we have Dave Muschanisi from Rattler Racing. Would like to share some words with you all about this particular event in Elbert County.
Hello, sir.
Commissioners, nice to see you. Yes, Dave Muschanisi here. I reside in Douglas County, and we host quite a few events. The quick history for us moving to Elbert County was my course director, Paul. He used to take his elderly mother out for drives, just, and he picked this area, Elbert County. And I didn't know at the time, but really what he was doing is plotting out a course. Because we originally were set to host the first Mad Gravel in Salida, and COVID hit. And so we kind of had to shift things around a little bit, and so he was plotting out a course. And I've been a mountain bike racer for quite some time, and the McNeil Ranch at Peaceful Valley used to host events, and so he put the course together, and then I looked at the course and said, wait a sec, Peaceful Valley is right here. And so that sort of is how this happened. So twenty twenty-one was our first event, and it's just grown from there. And what was it, twenty twenty-two, we made it a three-day affair, and it's really taken off. We're really excited about it. Last year, the Colorado Tourism Office awarded us a grant because of the multi-county impact. Of course, there's probably not a ton of cyclists in Elbert County as much as there is for sure in Boulder, Denver, Douglas, and El Paso. And so that's a big part of it, but we feel great about bringing all these people together into Elbert County. And so far, it's been fantastic. Just, we're actually bringing international riders to our event, and super excited to be working with Elbert. It's such a relief in terms of some of the challenges we've had with other events. So we're excited, and so thank you very much for that. Yeah.
I was going to say, sometimes when we look at what we have to offer in the county, there's not a lot of people that look at our gravel roads as
Yeah.
as a big selling point.
You'd be surprised, especially with the backdrop of Pike's Peak, and we have some great drone footage of the whole thing. And it brings people, and gravel is an exploding thing in the cycling world. For some reason, I don't know why, it's exploding, and Steamboat Gravel is a big one, of course. They get thirty-five hundred riders. I don't think we're going to get to that level here, and if we do, that'll be a conversation with everybody here in Elbert County. But it's got potential to do something pretty special, we think, so.
How many folks did participate in the last event?
So last year, it's kind of hard to answer because it's a three-day, it's a three-day affair now, but the big one, we kind of call it the crux, which is Sunday, and that's the day that actually impacts Elbert County roads. Everything else on Saturday and Monday are kind of within that thirty-eight hundred acre property. But this year, we're hoping for Sunday, we're hoping for over five hundred. And we just feel like, I'm a terrible marketer, and so we feel like it's got the potential to go quite a bit more. And it's certainly gaining steam. Yeah.
And I appreciate the coordination you continue to do with staff and SO, and to make sure folks are safe when they're out.
Absolutely. That's, my course director is, I always say, he's almost obsessive about safety, but I need that, right? We need somebody like that, that, he's a sign guru. He puts signs up everywhere. I know he's worked with the Sheriff's Department quite a bit as well, so yeah, every year seems to get a little better.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dave. Yeah, this Mad Gravel is becoming quite the event in Elbert County, so we thank you for sharing those words. Commissioners, I'd like to read the proclamation, if I may. Okay, great. We are recognizing May sixth through tenth, twenty twenty-four, as National Economic Development Week in Elbert County, Colorado, whereas the International Economic Development Council, IEDC, the largest professional economic development organization, is dedicated in providing leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members, and partners. And whereas, in two thousand sixteen, the IEDC created National Economic Development Week to increase awareness of local programs and services that create jobs, advance career development opportunities, and increase quality of life among our communities. And whereas, the Economic Development Council of Colorado, EDCC, works to strengthen our state's economy by unifying organizations involved in economic development, fostering the exchange of ideas, insights, and best practices for economic developers. And whereas, the EDCC supports a week-long celebration of Colorado's economic development ecosystem and its partners. And whereas, economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by assisting in the creation, retention, and expansion of jobs to facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a sales tax base. And whereas, economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. And whereas, the Elbert County Economic Development Department is committed to help facilitate the creation of jobs, recruit, attract, and retain businesses, serve as a guide to connect businesses to resources, advocate for businesses, business-friendly policies, encourage private sector investment, collaborate with local, regional, and state strategic partners, assist in infrastructure improvements, and support a thriving community. And now therefore, the Elbert County Board of County Commissioners do hereby recognize May sixth through tenth, twenty twenty-four, as National Economic Development Week in Elbert County, Colorado, and remind individuals the importance of pursuing economic prosperity in our communities, expanding career opportunities, and making lives better.
Thank you, Mark. And we've got a copy of that up here than was in the packet, so I would accept a motion to approve this proclamation for publication.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the proclamation recognizing May sixth through tenth as the National Economic Development Week in Elbert County.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this proclamation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Alrighty, would you like a picture?
Yes, oh, boy, that would be wonderful. If you'd just generally be so kind if we could do a photo op over here at your pleasure with Jacob and Dave as businesses representing Elbert County. Thank you.
Alrighty, moving on to board planning for our next meeting. If we could, Tiffany, just kind of an update of where we are schedule-wise on closing out the audit for twenty-three would be good. And then if we have a schedule for getting going on twenty-five budget, that's probably a good time to just start talking that as well. If we could, not for the next meeting, obviously, but one of our meetings in June. If we could get kind of an update on how things went this year with Stampede, I think it would be good to just kind of close out. If their new procedures had the impact we hope they do, have anything that you'd like to hit?
I think we talked about the fleet management policy being...
Oh, yeah, so we can probably bring that back for appointment. And then Monty did want to take formal action on his request to appropriate for the, or to approve spending on the design work for the bridge. And as the legislature closes out today for the year... the year, we'll have some discussion on what bills that impact our county and our citizens, and probably highlight some of the things, or lowlight depending on which bills they are, what came out of that building up there this year. That's enough to get us going. So we do have a couple of land use items this afternoon on the schedule, so we will recess now at ten-thirty and reconvene at this location at one P.M. The two items we have are a preliminary plat for the Alora subdivision and a preliminary plat request for Phantom Creek, a smaller subdivision, but my understanding is that will be continued. So with that, we're in recess, and we'll see folks at one. Thanks.